... Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to tonight's, Dr. Jenna, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Meehan makes a motion, I have a second. I'll make it, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Robinson makes a second, any discussion? In my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion passes. All right, moving on to tonight's consent agenda, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda? I'll make that motion. Councilor Bauer makes that motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Ludwig makes a second, any discussion? In my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion passes. All right, moving on to the public part, do we have anyone?
Yes, two gentlemen, Jerry and Brian, regarding golf carts, number thirty-ten-two-hundred-and-fifty-six Avenue in Isantia.
Who's supposed to go on there?
Yeah, please just state your name and address.
Just state your name and address.
Jury's Admich, two-hundred-and-fifty-six Avenue in Admich, and Brian Wixby.
Brian Wixby, three-zero-seven-five-two-hundred-and-fifty-six Avenue in Isantia.
All right, gentlemen, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know they banned, snowmobiles at one point, but I'm back here. I came into St. Francis and bought some groceries on my golf cart. And I got pulled over on my way out back to Isantia by one of their fine offices of the locker. Leaving, I couldn't make the common line, so, you know, I had to pull over. But, I'm just wondering, you know, because of, all we do is drive from Isantia two-hundred-and-fifty-six to the St. Francis, and we're going to pay the fee to do that. You know, like, you got bikes that ride on the road, and they say, well, it's dangerous, it's dangerous for a bike. It's dangerous for, you know, nobody uses a sideboard, we were just angry. And we're just curious if there's any way we can change that ordinance to let us come into County Market, or whatever, and, you know, we're not proving around, you know?
We'd like to bring our, you know, wife on, make a little trip, go get a couple items, go back home.
Yeah, well, it would be funny.
And enjoy it, Brian.
Well, it would be funny, gentlemen, if it weren't for these days, I'd want to drive my golf cart, you know? A little more scenery, a little, you know, kick, a little winter.
What does the ordinance read?
Uh, reading on the golf cart, the restricted area surrounding the golf course, and permits are required. But it's, there are certain streets that are allowed on, basically for access to and from the golf course from the residence.
All right, so, is there anything we can do here, or we shouldn't do, or what should we do?
Could, excuse me, could you, like, you know, like, the city of Isantia, they issue permits to put on your golf carts and stuff like that, which they charge twenty-five dollars. Now, that'd be extra revenue for you people.
Well, I know there's another lady that drives a golf cart around here. Now, I don't know if she just lives in Mo-Ho Park, but she goes to County Market, you know, so.
Okay. Well, what's your opinion? I mean, I don't want to open up a can of oranges.
Well, I, I got a picture of the, of their type of permit state, and you put it on your rear left fender of your golf carts. I got a picture of it.
Does it have an annual permit then?
Yeah, it's an annual permit, from January first to December thirty-first, is twenty-five dollars a year.
Is there any restrictions with it, where you can go with the cart, or?
It's just, you have to be in golf cars.
Yeah, and, especially for very state highways, which we're in, we have a little bit disabled with that. Even our ATV ordinance, we do a lot of them during certain times, but they're limited, basically, to all streets. Because we can regulate them streets, and maybe we have their official limits, my relatives and state highways would be a little bit.
I know when I drive in Isantia all the time, I think I'll seat down forty-seven, that I would throw in, I'd have everybody pass me by, I never said anything.
We got this little moving vehicle saying, we got lights, horns.
And you got a base shoulder, you know?
No, I, I, I understand your argument, I just, I think, in my opinion, especially on state highway, even on local streets, the more you open this up to moving vehicles, things like driving issues, we already have it these days. I think it's rest assured that that's my opinion. I'm not even a fan of my local streets, and most of them are three zones. You get up into Isantia County, and six of you are in the front line, so fifty-five, thirty each time. I wouldn't want to be on one state highway, um, to be honest, I don't know.
So, when you're driving, are you on the highway or on the shoulder?
On the shoulder.
Like the bikes?
As far as to the right you can get on your shoulder, is where we drive.
I give it like you're riding a bicycle. And we don't go on actual highway, we're on the shoulder, which is sort of five feet wide, four or five feet wide.
Yeah, I, you know, even motorized bikes, with a motorcycle, but they're big, they're moped, there's these certain restrictions for them, they have to, state statute restrictions for them, they have to be so far to the right of the road, if you're under certain, you got a permit, things like that, so. All, I think MinDOT would, again, I have some opinions on that, as far as us saying that being on a golf cart is not a state highway.
I even got insurance, you know, as cars, you know?
Well, how far did you went, two-fifty-six, I mean, fifty-third, cross over forty-seven, you go down the next stop sign, take a left, take that road, which comes out here, which can also turn right before this building, and go right to County Market, the back way, what would be that problem? We weren't on forty-seven.
Again, you're still on Isantia County.
And you say limits, right? Is what you're saying.
We don't, you know, we wouldn't have jurisdiction until you get into the.
Right, the St. Francis, the county of the St. Francis, the back roads.
If Isantia County would allow you under their county roads out there.
I mean, yeah.
Once you get even the long way around, you're still not on the county roads, you're not dealing with those streets. So, again, the county, you know, they do have certain restrictions, and even Oak Road, their restrictions are different down there than they are here, so each city's going to have some, some of that restriction. Say whoever has jurisdiction over that road.
Right, and our police didn't find it already?
No, they just, they took our license and checked it out, of course, I was perfect, but, but, you know, he got him out for about ten minutes, my grocery got lost, but, but, no, he just said, all he said to me was, and I was on forty-seven, he said, just drive only sixty. He didn't tell me to get off.
And that's, that's obviously the concern, again, any slow-moving vehicle, especially certain times of day on a highway, it can be pretty busy, and give it a distraction issue, you have. I'm not a personal fan of it, that's my opinion, but.
Boy, council, you have anything to say on this joke? Want to say anything on this? I might get feedback on that, everybody.
I don't know, I, I think it's really an interesting subject, and the biggest thing that we have to be concerned about is opening up. Not that it's just going to open the floodgates to golf carts going everywhere, because that would be unreasonable to think that, but I think that, the main thing is looking out for people's safety, especially on the highway. I'm interested to hear what MinDOT would have to say, or even look at some of those statutes that govern those things, because, obviously, if the state says something about it, there's, there wouldn't be much we could do as far as the state has an issue. I don't know, I think a lot of people do a lot of things at their own risk, it is, I don't know, the main thing is keep people safe, and that's, I think, what, what the officer, it sounds like he was trying to do, I'm glad that you didn't necessarily tag or anything, but, you know, hopefully get them saved, which is what they should be doing, I think, too. As far as me, looking into the ordinance and all that stuff, I don't know if that would be top priority to do. I, like, you always say, if you look into anything, so I wouldn't be opposed to looking into something, but dedicating staff time to this at this moment, I wouldn't be the one to say whether or not that'd be a good idea.
May I make a comment? If you had a golf cart, sure, and you and your wife, you know, like, we live, we live like four and a half miles out.
I get it.
And you want, your wife wants to go, go enjoy her, go, let's go to County Market, grab a couple grocery items, come back, and, you know, and instead of using, wearing, tearing your vehicle, you know, yes, it's more expensive, it's more expensive than my charging up the electric.
No, I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to, I get it, if I were you.
I mean, I thought, I thought, pull them backwards, and get a permit, coming, you know, on the same side as the snowmobiles are off, they're only allowed on one side of forty-seven, coming in to get gas, and that's County Market side, so that's why I said you pull it backwards, but it's not that. By the permit, you're still on the same side that the snowmobiles are allowed to go on, and you're not on forty-seven.
Well, that sounds more doable to me in that respect, but, I mean, the problem that, that, I think councilwoman's thinking about is, is that you two can obey the law, but then there's ten other people that are doing this, and they'll go, well, now, we got a permit, we can go here. I mean, it's like, I've always said, laws aren't for the people obeying, and for the ones who don't obey them. That's why you have a police force to force them, because there are those people out there that just stink the road, they can do whatever they want when they want, or they want to do it. So, if we let you two, which can be responsible, I mean, do I do, there's responsible bike owners out there? Yeah, I do, bicycles, motorcycles, whatever, yeah, I do it, and I see signs that watch off motorcycles, and I see rocking bikes going right down the road. So, there's always those people that abuse the law, and then, then it puts it on our place to do that tough stuff, which takes them away from other stuff where they should be. So, that, that's, that's how we look at it in the bigger perspective, you know? You're looking at it from here, and I understand where you're coming from, we have to look at it from the whole thing, so let's just discuss this a little further, Kevin?
I want to follow, like Joe said, that public safety is paramount. I commend the officer, allowing common sense to prevail, and, you know, give them safety, and then, cause a financial strain on you. I own a thirty-five mile per hour moped, as well as a vintage car, and I think I'd much rather bring my wife down on a moped so much, the vintage car, than to get groceries. I think if it was, I'd take fifteen dollars a year for that moped, and I use it very, very little. And again, like the police chief said, I have to, I have to ride on the shoulder of the road, there's certain things I, I can't impede traffic. So, I wouldn't devote any resources to it, I think in the long run, take a look at it, but again, Oak Road, now and then, they, they'll do a little different circumstances as far as the inner, inner infrastructure, their roads and whatnot, you can't get too much trouble there, but. It's up to look at, but it's not paramount on my list of things to do right now.
Rob?
I would be interested in looking at the statutes, snowmobiles versus ATVs versus golf carts, because I had a golf cart, and I used to drive around my street, Carey Street, just in case anyone, I don't have it anymore, but I wasn't near, near the golf course, but a lot of people don't know what the rules are or not. But I'm not for limiting one type of vehicle, when we allow for snowmobiles, why not add ATVs or golf carts? And I see them driving around all the time, and they're just doing it without knowing. Let's firm that up a little bit, put that all under one rule. At this juncture, though, what we have on our plate with budgets and stuff like that, I think it would be something we could do early in January, so that we get a nice rule out come spring.
Yeah, because of the same, you know, you say things, or so, snowmobiles, you can get, you know, a lot, you know, a lot like you said, like yourself, I mean, it's the same thing with a bike, a snowmobile, anything, you know?
And we all, and we all have it, aren't you? You know, I got a snowmobile once, too, and, and got that close, and I'm like, oh, time to get rid of it, because, you know, they're very dangerous. But coming into County Market, I don't see snowmobiles going ninety miles an hour to get to the gas station.
And I know, yeah.
They're not at reasonable speed, there's rules and regulations for snowmobiles, should be the same for a golf cart within our city limits, whatever. So, that's where I stand, it's just kind of that.
I mean, I've driven a motorcycle, because of, or we changed the law enough, because people didn't love it, and they changed lanes, they didn't see. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't going to take that chance anymore. I suppose we changed that law, so.
Don't sound good, I have a motorcycle, I love it, but, you have to be defensive.
Yeah, you do.
Even on a golf cart, you know, you're on the shore of the road, you got to be aware of everyone around you, so.
That's why we got mirrors on, seeing behind us, gonna make a turn, you know, you got the old, the old rule, that turn, right turn, so stop, you know? If you ain't got that turn signal, then I'm gonna be putting in my mind for next year.
You know, the one thing I don't see people use a lot is their turn signals. I think, I think if they think it boosts their energy, the battery, but it doesn't.
A lot of people will turn to the right lane, either one's turning the corner, cover over the side of that guy.
No, I, I totally agree with what's already been said, other than, you know, it's hard to compare a golf cart to a, to a snowmobile, because a snowmobile can go way faster than a golf cart can, you know? Those golf carts aren't going that fast, but, and again, you know, you guys are responsible, but we have those people who don't have mirrors on them, they don't have lights on, they don't, and those are the people that we have to agree about. And just like a snowmobile or, you know, the golf cart, I guess, my worry is, you know, we have, Tennessee has lots of impaired drivers around here, and you're not as safe on those.
You can name your driver job.
Well, we're working on that, we're working on that, but I would.
If you really have off week memos?
I would, I would hate to have, see a, a car versus golf cart accident.
Or like anything.
Well, yeah, any of those things are, are worse, but it's just, it's something that, you know, we, unfortunately, we can't give you an answer tonight.
No.
You know what would be ideal, by the way, and I just bring this up, kidding you anyway, but, or, MinDOT is doing a study on forty-seven right now, for a revamp of forty-seven, from Free Street to Ambassador. Wouldn't it be nice if they put a lane in specifically for this type of vehicle, and not the shoulder, and a lane just for that? But I can tell you right now, you probably have a better shot with a powerball than that happened, because I can guarantee you, you won't see that. But that would be ideal, if we could get that, and I would actually bring that up for the next NTP, I will bring that up, but I can tell you probably won't go for it. But anyway, listen, I think what we can do for you is, we can look into it, as far as other cities, and see what our, our perspective is. I think I'd probably have to agree with Rob, that coming into the season right now, we'll probably have to hold off, and we'll kick it off in next year, but we will look into it, as we always do. We made no promises, because, like I say, again, it isn't, this is not, you know, saying anything about how you utilize your vehicle, and the responsibility that you do with it. It's those other people out there, between snowmobiles, that we've had restricted areas that they do, I've had a lot of heat and that, there's a snowmobile orange and that, but there's those people out there that restrict it for everybody else. I know, when I was in the Army, one person screws up, we all paid for it, I don't know how much it was.
But you're done.
Yeah. So, all I'm saying to you is that we'll look into it, on the best we can here, and give you a good and honest answer, and see what we can do for you.
Yeah. Do you need more of our aggressives than what we got?
I think we have.
We only put first names, we didn't put no last names.
Well, they're just looking, they don't care about last names.
Any information you have, leave us on our phone numbers, or with your contact, that'd be good, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for raising your attention. And I wish there was more responsible people like yourself, so we make our life a little easier.
Trying to make it easy for us and our wife, so, you know, make it a little easy, nice trip.
Well, if I could clone you two, and multiply that by a lot, I'd probably save it as a stamp off, but that's the difference.
I was going to tell the officer, but I thought it better not, I was going to say, can I get off the other side, because this door don't work.
Well, that's a whole other story. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you for listening, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, barmaid, you got something?
No.
Okay, all right, moving on to, let's see, we'll just go into new business. Uh, let's see, we'll go to ordinance two-fifty-two, second series, including rezoning, outlot A of Rivers Edge, first edition, form, R two to Rivers Edge, PUD plan unit development, second reading.
Mayor, council, tonight, for you is a second reading for the Rivers Edge Development, this will allow the rezoning of that district to move forward with their subdivision, and in final flat. There's any questions, we have an answer.
Being honest, the second reading, we've already gone through much more, thank you again, for everything we've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion, Kevin?
No, sorry, is that me, Joe, Rob, Sarah?
Nobody. This is North, calling a motion to adopt the ordinance two-fifty-two, I'm not going to read the whole thing, the ordinance, number two-fifty-two, second series, doing a motion. Councilor Meehan makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Ludwig, there's a second, pardon any further discussion, we'll do a roll call, Rob?
Feldman?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Edwick?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Neil Bauer?
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Swiss Landing Concept Plan.
Yes, Mayor, council, reporting tonight is a concept plan of U for development called Swiss Landing. So, the applicant requesting review and feedback for a one-hundred-and-sixty-three unit single-family development, and that site is located on roughly a hundred-and-thirty acres, north of Ambassador, and between Highway forty-seven and the Rock River. So, this is the site as it looks like today, the western portion of the site is mainly flat agricultural land, and then as you move east, it becomes wooded wetland. You can see the steep slope that separates the wetland and flood plain from the higher flat agricultural land. So, for land use, this concept plan was compared to both the existing twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, as well as the draft twenty-fourty comprehensive plan, and that's due to the timing of, you know, whenever this would come in as a preliminary plat, it would depend on which, which plan it was being evaluated under. So, for the twenty-thirty plan, which is on the left here, you can see that most of the site is guided for low-density residential use, which is one and a half to two and a half units per acre. There is a small piece that's medium-density residential, as well as a commercial piece along Highway forty-seven towards the south. And the net density that's proposed as part of this concept plan is one-point-five-seven units per net acre, so that fits right in the low-density residential density guidance, so that would meet the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan requirements. When we look at the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan, you can see that that area is actually guided for much higher densities, so that area is guided for medium-high density, which is seven to twelve units per acre, high density, which is twelve to sixty units per acre, and then commercial along forty-seven. So, if this concept were to come in when the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan is adopted, it would need a comprehensive plan amendment, because the density guidance, or the densities wouldn't, wouldn't match. When we look at zoning, the existing zoning is a mix of residential districts, so R one, R two, R three, as well as some business in the southern, in the southern corner. The entire site is within the urban Rock River Management District as well. And the applicant would be proposing to use a PUD here, in a unit development, to create this development, which a PUD is allowed in the urban Rock River District, but that allows some flexibility as far as the development requirements and restrictions go. So, this is the concept plan as it stands today, there are a hundred-and-fifteen proposed lots along Highway forty-seven, and these are the villa lots, they're the ones in blue, and then there are forty-eight traditional single-family lots, which are along the river there. So, there is a private park as well, that's located on the eastern section, mainly in the area of the flood plain on the site. There is a small piece of commercial down in the southern corner, and that is planned for a commercial development in future times, as a part of this specific concept plan. So, when we look at dimensional requirements, again, PUDs will allow a bit of flexibility here, but the requirements as they are today would be that the minimum lot width for the Rock River Management District, for the urban area, is ninety feet, and the proposed lot width here are eighty feet for the single-family homes, and then fifty-five feet for the villa lots. So, smaller than required, however, again, with the PUD, there allows some flexibility there. With setbacks, there are several PUD setback requirements, those include things like building separation of at least twelve feet, as well as an exterior setback around the entire PUD. But typical setbacks, such as side, rear, front setbacks, would all be evaluated against the existing zoning districts, should a preliminary plat come forward. When we look at streets and transportation, a city engineer was able to take a look at the streets and the street network for this concept plan, and determined that the network is generally conducive to the site, however, there are a few issues with streets that serve the villa lots, particularly this corner right here, which isn't designed to city standards. So, that being said, those, those streets may need to be private streets instead of public streets. When the planning commission reviewed that, they strongly urged the applicant to redesign those streets to meet city standards, so that those would be public streets in the future. Conditional use permit is required for the creation of public roads within the urban Rock River Management District, that's required by state statute, so just something to be aware of. And then, the final piece about streets and transportation here is the development access, so this development, the concept, would have access points up north here, on two-forty-first, reaching Highway forty-seven, and then to the south, it would access Ambassador Boulevard. So, both of those are not within city jurisdiction, Ambassador is a county road, and Highway forty-seven is obviously a state road, so both of those entities would need to review the concept or the future plans as part of that. We did reach out to MinDOT to get their initial review, just to see what they would determine as far as if there were anything that they want us to be aware of, to pass on to the applicant, and a few of their main things were that the right and left turn lanes would be required on Highway forty-seven at that two-hundred-and-forty-first intersection to the north. They also mentioned the Highway forty-seven improvement study that's currently being done, and noted that there may be some additional changes that come as a part of, as a result of that study, that may filter up here and affect this plan. They also pointed out that there should be sidewalks and trails throughout the entire development, and those should connect to the existing trail system that the city of St. Francis already has. When you look at open space, there's a private park that's roughly thirteen acres, that's proposed in the eastern area of the site, and this would be strictly for residents of the development, and it would be fair density usage, so things like a boat ramp, picnic areas, possibly some racks for canoe or kayaks, things like that. This would not count towards the park dedication requirements, again, because this would be a private park for that development, and wouldn't be for use for the general public. Any land taking plans, any futures and middles would have to include land taking plans that are harmonious with the code requirements. When the planning commission reviewed this, they mentioned that the existing vegetation along Rock River is very important to maintain, and that they would like to see that in any documentation, should any plans be formed, where they want, everybody to be aware that they couldn't clear cut their backyards, for instance. So, that would be documentation for builders, the contractors, the homeowners, everybody does it all. There is one main wetland on the site, and as part of any future plans, we would be requiring wetland delineation to determine exactly where the boundaries of that wetland are. With that, then, there are wetland buffers, as well as structure setbacks, that would need to be adhered to, from the concept plan, it looks like those are being adhered to, but again, that wetland delineation would tell us exactly where those wetlands are on the site. Finally, the flood plain, as you can see, it's within the eastern portion of this property, again, mainly within where that private park is proposed. None of the homes, as part of this concept, are proposed to be within the flood plain, they're all outside there. So, there's no formal action required tonight, the applicant is merely requesting feedback and review, so that they can take into consideration and decide whether to go forward and reevaluate their plans. I can answer any question?
All right, I have some questions. Tell me here, Beth, it says here that one-point-five-seven units per acre meets and all that, so, is that for the two thousand and three comp plan, and the two thousand and forty draft? So, where usually on acre, a developer puts four houses on a lot, city stands, city bees, giving a thousand square feet for a city lot, how does that correlate to this?
Uh, this would be, let's see, we're looking at a density of one, it would be larger lots than that.
Right, but it still would be city stormwater lots?
Hmm.
So, basically, what you're talking about is half-acre lots, close to.
Roughly, and again, that's.
You mean recurring lots, two thousand.
Villa lots are going to be a lot smaller, but if you look at the concept plan, if you look at some of these large single-family homes up there, they go to the river, I think, quite a lot.
Right, recurring lots closer to the river, twenty thousand square feet, and others, twelve thousand, or fifty square feet.
Right.
So, basically, we're not, we're not going to be condensing, I'm just bringing this up for publics, you know, if you're there, we're not putting four lots on an acre, or also, we're putting basically two.
Right, as an average.
Average, okay. All right, that's good to me, and then also, can we ask anything, with the twelve percent slope off the river, you know, and the clear cutting, which I'm all, not, I'm all for not clear cutting, but, what are the height restrictions of the buildings, is that even mentioned at all at this particular point?
I believe the height restrictions there are thirty-five. Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? Okay.
And that would be required to be followed. And that would be required to be followed.
Because I have no doubt, I know the council is concerned, and the river people are concerned about height restrictions, I mean, heights of building and clearcutting, we don't want that, so. All right, that's good. But there's one thing that I really, I want to bring up at this particular point, because it's not something, nothing's etched in stone here, but on page... But on page seven, actually, it's like 33 of the packet, it says here something here that catches my eye here. "It appears that the streets serving the proposed villa lots, the 115 villa lots, may not meet city standards for public streets, however, may be acceptable to maintain as a private street." You know, I had a discussion with Paul already about this today, and when I campaigned last year, I ran into a situation on the ponds, that there was a developer years ago that developed an area segment of the ponds area out, and then turned it over. It was an association that took care of the plowing. And this one lady was, actually, the president of the association was talking to me, as I went to her door, and she said to me that they were having problems with, with the, you know, getting good power services, whatever, and wondered why our roads got, our roads got power before their roads. Of course, city requirements, our roads are different than their roads. And I went ahead to check it out with Kate, I checked it out with Joe of Coleman, and she found out, of course, of the plan of the development. And so it was pretty much, they had, that was designated as a private road, so it was taken care of by the developer, then turned over to the homeowners' association. The key, the problem I had with this, the developer now is gone. I mean, they're gone, they saved their money, pocketed what they saved. Instead of doing city requirements, they built less of their road, and they left, and all the homeowners are holding back. And then also, often, as electrofishing, I always get, well, we pay taxes. Well, we pay taxes, but you're planning your development. So my question here is, my concern here is, I don't know if we should allow things like this, okay? And I just bring this up in general, but my thought is this, we should be doing our roads to city requirements. It's good for garbage truck haulers, it's good for, it's good for the weight-gross trucks, it's good for plow trucks. Our services for plowing are much better now with our plow vehicles and everything.
Emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles, everything that goes right down the line, police, fire, whatever, okay? To me, you're building basically five-ton roads where it should be seven. I'd go nine-ton everywhere myself, and you wouldn't have to worry about over restrictions. But that's never going to happen. We'd be in a perfect road, but not this one. Seven would be the number, okay? But I'm just saying to you, as I've said before, in dealing with drain adjustments and stuff like this, I still believe in certain developments where piping is necessary. We shouldn't allow it to wait until the ground absorbs it, because the sand will throw festering in the clay. But still, people are being sold lots that they think they've got a long backyard, to find out they've got half a backyard, because the rest is in the drain adjustment. So to me, having a developer say, okay, this segment of the development, you need to put piping down, so it drains faster, so people have the yard that they thought they were buying, which should have been told to them by the real estate agent, but wasn't. My point is, I'm trying to clarify things and make it a little simpler down the road, or clarity to it, because to me, in this particular situation, this is just opens up a can of worms down the road. I would say to the developer, make it city road, and let us do the plowing. And not have to do associations and things like that, where we plow around it, but we don't plow this one second. That just opens us, us getting grief later on, by the city, who's going to, the people calling us to go, well, why are our roads supposed to cover first or plow first, and not our road? So you've got a whole development, if I'm looking at this map right, you've got a whole development, one small segment, Beth. Is that correct? That's going to be private versus all of given city.
Mayor, that was, that was the, the comment made by the city engineer is that may be a possibility. The applicant himself has not expressed either whether or not the roads would be. He's looking for feedback.
And I'm just giving my feedback, and I would strongly recommend going to city roads. It'll leave you a lot of problems for us down the road. Craig, would you have anything to say that, I mean, you have a problem with going from five-ton to seven-ton roads to route development?
Well, typically, the standards are sacrificed on the width, not so much the weight.
Okay, so the width is the difference. And I can kind of, properties and stuff like that, I understand. But I'm just thinking that, again, the developer gets done, he kills it out, the building's done, it's the homeowners that are holding the bag on it. And that's what I'm trying to leave you for in the long run. I'm just saying to you, again, from this one lady, from this one association, well, we could solve our problem, because there was a developer in ink that's long gone in the ponds, and so we plow around it, and they see this being done rapidly, or to, to, to level our people to our plowing, and they can't do that. So I still think that, and I'm going to open this up for discussion, but it's just something I would highlight at me. And again, nothing's etched in stone here, but I just think it's a, if we allow it, promise to stand up down the road, come back to haunt us, as a council. Kevin, what do you have to say about that?
Um, you took some of my thunder, but that's cool. The private park portion, but yet city streets serving, that's one thing I was thinking about as far as I say, how do you control, somebody who lives on the west side of town that wants to come down into that area, they have signs that post a private park? I mean, how do you, it's not a gated community or anything, how do you keep that people from, you know, the infraction of going in there, hey, it's, you know, it's a public waterway, why have it private? But again, the city street portion, and I talked to that same lady you're talking about too, is again, you're left high and right as far as the plowing. Also, future development around the area, these other lands that are not developed as of yet, will, if this, as this marches forward, will this, will we be able to have access and control over the future streets and whatnot that serve this area? Right now, there are going to be two access points. And is this conducive to future development around it, as these other properties might become available over time?
Council, it does look like this would be conducive to future development. This is a fairly contained area, being that it's bounded on one side by the river. It can't grow anymore on that side. It's bounded on the other side by the highway. So two, two access points for that amount of development seems adequate. Again, if we dig further into this, if preliminary plans came forward.
Any properties, and I should have looked at a bigger map, but to the north and south, are there other opportunities for development as properties might become available?
Council, so to the south is the business park.
Okay.
To the north, we get into the different Rock River restrictions. So even to follow those roads north, we may have a lot of restructuring to meet the different D and R rules.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
By the way, you know, on the commercial part, would a developer have to build that house commercial? Or could that be changed to residential lot? Its own beat two, so it can be changed?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it could be changed. It would need a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as well as zoning code amendment, to change that. However, at this time, the applicant's plans aren't to keep that as a commercial area, which is in line with everything that's been guided its own in that area.
And by the way, for, for the park thing, Kevin, I just want to say, the one thing about private parks is they maintain the park. So they take care of equipment glass and all that. Which seems to be something where we need to start funding our parks a little better anyways.
I was wondering if it would be a permitted situation where a resident, HOA member, we have a permit or something for their water craft or whatever, and if Joe and I wanted to go fishing, we might march in all their kayaks and stuff, and how do they, and keep you from going in there? I mean, how do they keep you from going?
They know everybody that lives there, so.
I think that's one of those heavy ground or situations.
I'm just curious. Whenever you're on brownies like that, and you tell somebody you can't go there, but yes, I can, it's the city street, and I know. Just throwing it out there.
Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, I, that was my, one of my main concerns too, is I, I see it kind of being a little bit of an issue for the city, getting lots of calls, and for the, for the police too. I mean, see, there could be some, you know, if you don't, I don't know, probably don't regulate that other than having to have some sort of pass to be there. If you didn't have it, you can't be there, but it's still going to take, take services to enforce that. So it looks to me like, looking through, there's a lot of things that the applicant needs to firm up before, you know, we can make a lot of judgment calls, because there's a lot of pieces that we don't have.
Well, that's why we're doing this on a special basis. By the way, let me just ask you, Beth, then as far as the park, you're going to private park, because they can, because the wetland area for our percentage of park, 10%, whatever, of the gross amount of the acreage and all that, which you're possibly, what, 13 acres, something like that would be a park? So they're going cash and move for that, right?
Mr. Mayor, correct.
So that way they have a private park, that they're doing cash and move for. And again, this is just discussion purpose here. There's nothing going to be etched in stone, how they'll come back or they'll come back, I don't know. Thank you.
Mine, mine was about the park itself as well. You're talking, you know, kayak, canoe, entry points, could be beneficial for the entire city of St. Francis. You could put in here, you can get out, and then there would come a park. Advice first, I don't know how strong the mercury is to get up that point. You can have, you know, business drop your canoes and stuff off north and end at this location. I would like to see it as a park dedication for the city of St. Francis. And I see some potential of having some great things inside there. There's a golf course, a pavilion, in and out, access for all your voting needs for the realm there. Why would we lock it into a private park when, when there's so much access for all the city of St. Francis? So that, that was my biggest concern, is the park dedication.
Any other discussion that council has?
By all means, and any comments I made, I'm not meaning to squelch this. I, these things all start with an idea. We want to encourage growth in our community. The, the water and sewer treatment facilities are more than capable of handling something like this. We, Kate worked very hard in her department for years, since they're started here, to get something like this going. So by all means, this is not a, I'm not throwing a wet blanket on now to give it here on council, but it starts with an idea, and I think it's a, it's very admirable, and it's got a lot of potential.
Well, right, I just want to rejoice themselves.
Yeah, I was going to say, for my input here, would be that the, the four major points that are kind of bullet pointed, I guess you could say, on the page 25 of the packet, I think were my biggest concern, with the streets beating city standards. The access points, which is interesting, they only did a little round pass there, it was kind of suggestive, but I don't know where that led me to. That's interesting to me. And then I've always said that my input would be, I'd still like to see more commercial on 47, if possible, for the, that's never going to happen, it's a longer story. But keeping 47 open for commercial, I think is probably making more sense.
Right, you have 163 lots there, and we'll be two involved too, so you get a better perspective. Really, we need to commercial there. But I, I just want to emphasize, for viewing public, this is just discussion purposes only. There's nothing here, this will go bad, our thoughts will go bad to the developer, and the developer will, will say, A, no, or yes, or what he'll agree with, or what he won't agree with, then he'll come back to us and then is zoning, and the process will begin ultimately. I've been pushing for this development for quite a long time, so to me, I want to see this happen. You know, but, but there are some concerns with parks and stuff like that that we have. I can understand why they just want to make it a private thing, because it's a good sell point for an association, for his people to use it, how they can model that. I have no idea, I'm sure they have a lot of thinking to do on their own. But do I see some great potential here? I like the mix between single-family residential, 48. I like the villas, because it'll just add my grades, for, as people get older, and our, since our population is getting older, so I see a win all the way around there. I see us being responsible to the river, despite what the various people thought before. We are being responsible to the river, this is the river. So really has nothing to do with the world product at all. But this shows how responsible we are with no clearcutting, heights and buildings and structures and setbacks and all that. We are responsible where we're before. So I will say that, I think you have some good comments, and I'll tell you, good job in here. Very, I like very much the letter, or the history of the work family. I know you write very well, but in the last months anyways, but did not have any idea this was sent back to me to me to want, which really, and how, and how he and two of his other family members ended up with the property, will to them, because there was no kids in that family. So really interesting story, interesting family. So I think there's some good hints there, some good points here, again, how it'll come back. But no, I just want to also emphasize, as Kevin said, we're not, we don't, we're not capacious at all. We want to see it out, and how it turns out and all that, we'll have to wait and see. So thank you once again. Any other comments from council? None? Okay, so do we need, that's just a direction that we have here, is that all we need? Is that all we want, or?
Yes, Mayor Council, all we needed was comments.
All right, thank you once again. All right, moving on to ordinance 253, second series, outdoor storage, first reading.
Mayor Council, before you tonight is request to amend our outdoor storage ordinance due to clarification issues and changes that occurred in other codes that we need to get this from the bottom. City codes are written to address a specific situation, and in section Z3, you can find where the city's intent can be clarified a couple of different ways in regards to how it's enacted. Owners are allowed to create a parking surface to store recreational vehicles. The code outlines the use of pavement, class V, and pavers. However, because our code was not specified on the paver requirements, it's left room for an interpretation, for somebody to put a paver under each wheel and not create a full surface, as our available version of the code intends. So with this, we're adding the clarification that the pavers must be applied to the area, much like paving of a tumulus or a concrete surface would require. And then additionally, in section F, staff has referenced, or corrected the references to code sections that are no longer correct. Back when we did the driveway and access changes in chapter 19, these sections were also changed. So to change it from 10 for B and bring it to 10 in 1915, so our ordinance is reflecting the correct area. The public hearing was held with the planning commission, no public comments were received. If council agrees and accepts tonight as a first reading, these changes would be effective October 21st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First of all, I'm all for terrification, I like that a lot. Anytime again, you're in gray areas, and so, good thing. So one question I have for you, Kate, is, it says here, are applied to the entire area beneath and extending 12 inches around the perimeter of recreational camping vehicles. So just, just for my knowledge, if the vehicle's 24 feet wide, then it would be 2060?
Correct, as long as it stays within the 500 square feet maximum required.
All right, well, I, I'm all for this, so Joe, what do you have to say?
I have nothing to add here.
Rob?
I have nothing to add.
Yeah, that's been an ordinance, 253, second series, outdoor stage storage, right, first reading. Do you have a motion?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Woodburn makes a motion, do I have a second? No second. Councilmember Bowery makes a second, any further discussion? Do a roll call, please.
Bauer?
Aye.
Edmond?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Neil Mo?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Kate? Okay, moving on to ordinance 254, second series, accessory structures, first reading.
Yes, Mayor Council, before you, it was a recommendation by staff to restructure the attached garage limits in rural areas. So back on August 5th, we had a builder and a property owner come forward and voice their concerns about our limited attached garage space. In our rural areas, this is also the areas in which we would see the greatest impact on the size of homes, because the lots can be bigger. As previously discussed, the code caps all garages at 1,000 square feet, no matter the size of the structure. After a view of several other cities and a view of various properties that have had this concern or this issue, staff recommends just using a flat 80% limit. This will allow the attached garages to stay in balance with the footprint of the home, and also prevent garages from exceeding the living area itself. Planning and zoning held their public hearing, and no comments were received. And if council accepts tonight's language, it would be effective October 21st. I'd be happy to answer in English.
Okay. So I had a couple that came to us with their builder on August 5th. That, this would work for them or not?
Correct, Mayor Council, this would, would accommodate them, and it would also assist in those larger homes that were not capping them. So we're, we'll end up with a very large home with a very small garage, so it's that balance on both sides.
No, I like it a lot, I like 80% of the envelope, I like that a lot.
Yep, and this would work for them.
All right, okay, and then the one question I have here is, on page 55 of the packet, urban service area, section B, item 3, residential properties with urban service area. Am I right on this one, right?
Yes.
Urban service area may have one detached accessory structure, not exceed 200 square feet size, in addition to private residential garage. The second detached accessory building shall not exceed 16 feet height. Now, if I recall here, we changed 250 for core acres and musa, and 250 and 500 on half acres.
Yes.
So am I wrong, or am I reading this wrong?
Mayor Council, so what happens is when we make these code changes, if you go into our city code on our website, the opening page gives you all of the amended codes. At the end of the year, they input that into the
At the end of the year, they need that into the general language. So right now, every time we've made a code, there's change, they're stacking up on the municipal cover. So at the end of the year, all of that language will be incorporated. I folded a section of code that that hasn't been incorporated into. So that change was made the end of April, I believe. But this just doesn't reflect it because we haven't, municipal code has not merged all of that together.
Okay, but for the viewing public, okay, we did change it. In USA, our municipal urban service area, half acre lots are five hundred square foot for storage shed and on quarter acre lots, buildable, buildable area, two fifty square footage. Two fifty, five hundred.
Correct, I would, yes, I would have to verify, I don't have that memorized.
I got it memorized.
Yes, it, it was changed in code, it's on our.
All right, I understand if anybody read the packet, like if you go on our website and read the packet, they see this, it is two fifty for, again, a quarter acre buildable and five hundred square feet on a, on a half acre buildable. Just so everybody, clarification for council and viewing public. Okay, good, and like I say again, I, I'm all for the eighty percent. Because what that does is instead of you, like you said, having a small house with a big garage, you now have a garage that fits the size of the house. Uh, it makes more sense. And, uh, and then, and clarification, anytime you're in gray areas, as I do with codes and stuff like that all the time, it's a good thing. So, I'm gonna pass this on to Sarah, can you comment? Rob?
Well, mine was still the eight hundred and forty square feet size except for minimum square footage being increased to a thousand and does not exceed eighty percent of the foundation. I don't see how, if we put a limit of one thousand, how they can get a bigger garage based on eighty percent of a larger home's foundation. Can they go bigger than a thousand?
Yes, so, Mayor Council, the properties that we're struggling with have all typically been ten to thirty-three acre properties, so they're larger properties, and they're building these homes with twenty-five hundred, three thousand square foot footprints. And by limiting those homes, those are the ones that are affected by this, this up to a thousand because those are all trying to reach that thousand and those are the ones that are being capped. Your typical, single-family home with a twelve hundred square foot footprint, the eight forty suffices for all of that. So it really has to do with that, the larger the lot size, the larger the home they're getting on there. And that thousand square feet, they can actually exceed that based on that. But it'll affect a few, it's not gonna be something that I see widely used. We haven't seen it widely used to this point, but we have had handfuls, so.
So is there a minimum, like you said, that you want a big house with a one single car garage, it would look goofy? Is there a, a minimum?
It's, so, city code does have a minimum requirement for forty.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I believe on this couple that came forth to us, that would allow them to have like a sixteen hundred square foot something type of garage facility?
Correct, I mean, their footprint was twenty-eight hundred square and they were able to, they were asking for sixteen, seventeen square.
Yeah, sixteen maybe, something like that, because I think otherwise they would have been at the forty. And, uh, it was really small. I think the only cost to them, by the way, is they had to put frost footage under the slab, which actually support the slab anyway, so it's not that big of a cost for them, so really not on the money. But I, I, I actually myself, I think that's a good idea. Joe, what do you have to say?
I'm all for removing the restriction on that.
Okay, Kevin?
I'm all for removing it as well.
All right, good job, I think, appreciate you looking into it because, um, you know, it's time and everything like that. But, uh, someone brought to our attention, as we've always said, when something's brought to our attention, we'll look into it. We'll do the diligence and that's what we've done here. So on that, uh, do you have a motion tonight for ordinance two-five-four, second series, accessory structures, first reading? Do you have a motion, or make a motion there? Councilmember Robinson makes a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Bubar makes a second, any vote, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Edmond?
Yes.
Robinson?
Aye.
Neil Moe?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Five, two, period.
Thank you. All right, now, moving on to, uh, saying a work session. Get out your phones, everybody, let's see what we can. Is this, uh, tentative topics for the work session, uh, included, but are not limited to nuisance property? City buildings in discussion, potential other businesses to be developed between now and meeting notice date, so. Do you have any case, uh, uh, Joe, that you're thinking of?
Um, Mayor Council, so for this particular work session, um, these topics, listen, you prefer September twenty-third or twenty-fourth, um, for a work session, but then also, uh, I was reminded today that MINDOT wants to come up on September sixteenth at five P M. Prior to the city council meeting and unveil, um, a couple sketches that, to the city council, that they're gonna bring to the open house on the nineteenth.
All right, so.
So two different work sessions.
Does anybody have a problem on the sixteenth, the next council meeting coming an hour early, talk to MINDOT?
Uh, no.
No?
No, all right, so let's just change the time, for us anyways, um.
Then it still would be over to the public, right, they could come in and listen to the.
So just expand that.
I think anyone could come, obviously, it's, it's a public meeting. However, the, the public's gonna have their opportunity to comment on the nineteenth. This is just to kind of get, so you guys aren't blindsided on the nineteenth, you guys kind of know what's gonna be presented, so.
So is this just a, so is this a council meeting session or this a work session? This a council meeting?
This would just be a work session on the sixteenth. And then on the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, we want to have a separate standalone work session to discuss the nuisance property, the city buildings and then other things that might come up, I heard, there's some other fancy topics.
All right, so we have a work session coming up, let's give us a little mayor's decision.
Sixteenth at five?
Yeah, five is six. Okay, so you have a work session on the sixteenth, next council meeting from five to six with, uh, MINDOT and then you have council meeting six to nine, six o'clock to whatever, okay? And then as far as the, uh, as far as the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, um, what day is good for you?
Twenty-third.
Monday, twenty-third, Joe?
Monday. I'm gonna decide with Sarah and go with the twenty-fourth because I, is there a school board meeting on the twenty-third?
Come on, you're having Monday.
All right, well, that, that's, uh, that's pretty important to us, to be there for that. So can we do it Tuesday, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Joe, can we do that?
Yeah, I can.
So let's do, uh, the twenty-fourth, Joe, work session. City Hall?
City Hall, yeah.
Okay, uh, five-thirty, is that good, everybody?
Yes, sir.
Let's do that. All right, so we have it set for the, uh, twenty-fourth, Tuesday, five-thirty P M at the city hall, be a work session. And the public, of course, will be right back, all right?
Yep, we'll post it on our home to work.
Okay, thank you, everybody, appreciate that. Okay, uh, are we moving on, are we meeting over the public, anyone?
Yep, Joe Monroe, in regard to ordinance two-fifty-four.
State your name and address, please, for the rest.
Joseph Brown, two-four-three-six-zero, UConn Street, Northwest, St. Francis, Minnesota. I have some questions about two-fifty-four, is this a, is this a new ordinance or is it just a, an amendment to an existing ordinance? Um, I guess that might be more directed at Kate?
So this is an amendment to an existing ordinance. We're reducing the restrictions that have a, a current cap at a thousand square feet.
Just for the attached garages as all?
Correct.
Good. You guys have anything to add? Thank you.
You have it.
Thank you.
All right, one thing about that, now, that's, that's good of a team, hoping to bigger houses and bigger lots is what it comes down to.
Correct.
Because you're not building twenty-four hundred square foot houses, well, I mean, you're really made for setbacks on a quarter acre.
Correct.
Pretty much, you can do. Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. All right, I'm moving on to, uh, council member reports. Sarah, I'll start with you.
I don't have a lot to report this, this time.
That's okay. All right. Rob?
I don't really have anything to report as well. Um, I've been on vacation for a couple of weeks, um, and nothing has really come up. So I have nothing to report.
Kevin?
I just want to encourage everybody on September nineteenth, the MINDOT open house meeting again at the First Baptist Church, four thirty, seven thirty. Um, again, on our nineteenth night, I was surprised to see, A, how many people didn't know that the MINDOT was even discussing it and what's with all the new lights, and so I tried to encourage and inform as best I could and then handed out the flyer that Kate provided me. Also, I ran into literally two people who knew nothing about the accident. And I was astonished, so, uh, those two things in mind, um, please, uh, enlighten yourself, come on out. They do an excellent job, they have very informative stations to go to, one-to-one. The people are very personable and they genuinely care about what's going to happen here, as we should as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Joe.
I would echo the meeting on September nineteenth. Um, it's important, last time we had some turnout, but it was not nearly enough, so. I encourage everybody, uh, to get there on the nineteenth, uh, four thirty to seven thirty. I would assume they're probably gonna do multiple presentations like we did last time, I'm not sure though. Um, but definitely show up and get your input in. You know, with some social media stuff, people were saying, uh, you know, we, we made our voices heard on social media and they want the council to reflect your decisions, to which I point out, this is your opportunity. One, not everybody's on Facebook. Two, you need to show up and get specifics of what you're looking for, if you really want to hear. Um, you know, some people want a tunnel, some people want a bridge, whatever it may be. How likely any of those are, I have no idea, but that's your opportunity to get in there and kind of express yourself. Um, and Facebook is not the place to do that, it's gonna be at this meeting, so I encourage people to go out there.
Well, I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly, that, uh, you know, five people talking versus twenty-five or fifty or a hundred people make a big difference. Um, the more voices you have, you, you know, you speak, you better, the more you have to listen. Um, we will be sending out flyers, uh, mailers on that type of situation, Joe, uh, notices or whatever, are we doing that?
MINDOT will be mailing notices on, uh, on most of the.
Yeah, I stated before many times, by the way, if you go on our website, hold your curse around, Howard Community, and then when the window pops up in the lower left corner, we'll be linked to the MINDOT website. And you can check it out that way. Um, I would be putting on my Facebook page, I know St. Francis posts, I'll put it on everywhere we can. Um, I've been told that this is one of maybe two meetings left open to the public. Uh, we don't have one for sure, we don't have a second yet. And there'll be one more to the business, which will be notified in the newsletter, so read the newsletter, which I hope people do. Um, as I said before, it's not a forum, I just actually write my segment, takes me quite a while to do it. So please, please. Um, and on that, um, I also say to you that, you know, from what I've been told by Kate and other people, the changes to forty-seven are gonna be a fifty-year term. So we have one shot to make this right, because I can tell you what, if it's not done right and you didn't have any input here, don't come complaining, because they're not gonna come out here and just change it. If the turn lanes aren't long enough and you think they should be longer and you didn't say anything, they're not coming back in here to urban park. They don't do that, they go by fifty-year increments, whatever, and hopefully we'll get this done right here. Um, I'm hoping they'll notice the traffic flow in two thirty-third and, uh, uh, forty-seven with quick trip now coming into play. I see the amount of traffic that that's generating. Um, I don't know what the solutions are for some, I'm not gonna repeat them now. Uh, we're going to a couple of meetings on this before that meeting. Um, so I will tell you that, uh, it's important, your input is being listened to and being heard, rather. Um, so get it, uh, not on the Facebook, because that's the easy way out. Like I think Kevin said months ago, uh, instead of putting thirty minutes on a keyboard, give us fifteen minutes upfront, face-to-face, and that's a big difference, so that's what I would emphasize to anybody else. Um, I would also like to say to everybody, um, there's a school in session now. Uh, please watch crosswalks for pedestrians, please watch kids out walking around. Um, and the lights on forty-seven, I think are a good step here, but still, you have to be cautious when you, when you're crossing that road. Um, I like to, I like to, there's been turn lanes, uh, and the arrows and stuff like that, I think it was a good move along, along the road. Uh, but still, it takes responsibility to each resident, a person crossing that road or people driving. I'm hoping to see a combination of slower speeds, uh, whether schools in session or not, kind of longer turn lanes, greens, stoplights. But I don't know what it's gonna be. But then the day, as long as traffic flows smoother and all safe to, safer, uh, that's the whole goal of this whole council and staff here is to make this a safer road, uh, and work in conjunction with the city's progress going forward and growth and, uh, and businesses in the area. Um, try to make their life a little easier for our fire and our police. I don't agree with that. Um, on that, um, let's see, if anything else I have to say about that, let's see, we have a, we have a, we have a, uh, recycling day coming up in October, that will be posted, is that posted in our newsletter?
It is.
It is, okay. So read, the newsletter is just more than the mayor's message, I like to say that's not what it is. There's a lot of things in that, in that newsletter to read about activities and, and, uh, uh, and, um, the recycling days and whatever and information. Also, uh, there'll be some, there's something in there, as I noticed today when I got my newsletter, about the automatic meter readings, uh, the meters being changed out. There'll be more information sent to you as we get that information and the dates on that. Uh, this was a good attempt by the council to, uh, be proactive and preemptive and, uh, be more effective in our reads and be more in-house control of it. It's a really good idea, no expense or cost to the public. Um, so I want to emphasize that again, no cost or expense to the public. We will have to call it, instead of dates and time, I understand, in the newsletter, is that right or not? Appointments?
All of you wanna go through the, kind of, the whole review?
Let's give a little respect to it.
So, yeah, the announcement is in the newsletter about the meter change-up program. Uh, we will be sending out the first mailing notification to residents, uh, requesting that they make an appointment with the contractor, Ferguson Water Works. Uh, all that information is provided in the, in that letter, uh, website and phone number, so uh, there will be, um, weekend and evening appointments so that we can accommodate as many folks as we can right up front. Um, there will be two more requests after that, uh, for that, uh, appointment so that we can get in and out. The meters actually have arrived, uh, they are in stock, uh, at our facility already, so uh, this'll, this'll get started here, um, soon. We have a few more approvals that we need to do and get some, get some appointments scheduled.
Hey, what's the plan of action from the legislative draft?
There will be further attempts. There are two more attempts with mailings to, to make that appointment, along with some door lockers as well.
And these people will be wearing badges, or people that are, 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 you know, recognized by the city could be the.
Full badges with the city logo on it there.
And of course, if the public has any questions, call the city, the public works. Um, also, what, what, are, are we looking to complete this by January, is that what I saw there, am I wrong?
Substantial completion by the beginning of December.
Okay, December, okay, very good. And, um, um, let's see, I just want to say to you that, um, saying the point, this is, again, the expense of changing the meter out is the city's expense. We're, it's not the homeowner's expense. If there's something around, a problem around that meter, they will be notified first before the meter change-up, correct?
Yes.
So, in other words, if there's a plumbing issue that allows us not to change that meter out and if you're in the public or talking to the public about this, um, you will be notified that change has to be upgraded or made before the meter can be changed out. The mere, actual meter change-out is being held, uh, expense-wise by the city, but anything around that, that may be a problem of the house itself, is owner's expense. And you'll be notified that before the meter can be changed out. Just want to go on record and state that. Also, um, any, uh, any, uh, information on riverbank credit?
So last week, they finished all of the urban gutter, storm sewer and catch basins. So for the weekend, uh, most people have to curb and park on the streets, but they have ramped in back in their, like, today. So now we'll continue on, uh, final grading ditches and we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna go to class five and, so it's moving along.
All right, is that culvert on the side of Mikey Gassen Plus, is that underground now or?
What do you mean?
The pipe, the drainage, the drainage pipe, you know, because you have a.
Oh, to the river?
To the river.
Correct.
That's underground, with a sediment basket in place.
Correct.
And then the pond, is that being, is the pond done yet?
It's rough, I mean.
So, and then, we are looking, what, October, did we complete with this?
Uh, towards the end of September.
September, very good, very good. I, I just want to go on record, uh, with the help of staff and council here. Uh, we are finally starting to work out some of the big problems that's been hand, uh, the baton's been passed down to this council. From past times, uh, twenty-six years of the making of a riverbank will be a solution, a problem, uh, found, uh, dealt with and solved, I like that. Uh, the metals, uh, two years in litigation has now been turned over to a new reputable developer, that's forty-two, uh, town hall and forty-two lots. Um, so we are starting to work out the bugs from past councils or problems that were here before. I can't emphasize enough that we're always going to have problems, always, in the city. Um, but I, I, I can only tell you that council myself believe that catching the problems earlier, being proactive and preemptive, catches them earlier, so they're solved in a faster way and less expensive way. And that's a good thing and a bad thing. So, right now, I'm starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, uh, where some of these issues are being dealt with and have been dealt with a long time, it's said that it's taken so long with some of these issues and expense-wise. Um, but they were handed down to us and we didn't ignore them, we dealt with them. Uh, and that's what I, I just wanted to emphasize again to the public, that this council. if this council does things on a preemptive, proactive, and, and, of attitude, we try to be on top of it and ahead of it, deal with it the best we can, and deal with the public, as I stated before, you can help us serve you better by bringing your problem to us, discussing it with us, we will look into it with full diligence that it deserves. You still may not be able to get the answer from out here, but you will get an honest research answer. I say in every newsletter I put out, I say at every council meeting, or multiple council meetings, I can tell you that it works. We are doing good here, we have to continue this going, working together with, with residents, working with staff, working with council, for a better safety, I truly believe that's the way to go. I can't emphasize that enough, as I see, I see that the results are going in a positive direction, and things are looking in a good, a good way, so. I want to thank the public for their input, and emphasize again, their input is being heard. You have a receptive government here, listening to your concerns, as long as they're reasonable, and they benefit the city and the majority of the city residents at large, we're willing to listen to almost anything. As we do tonight, talking about the bell cards, okay? Any further business to discuss at this time? Anybody? Alright, good job, thank you, S D G I, thank you, Kate, thank you, everybody. All in all, I will adjourn this meeting to seven eleven.